I call the order of meeting, a special hearing, a public hearing for the mayor and the city council, City of Havittagrace. The date is July 25th. The current time is six o'clock. I shall call the roll. Councilmember Robertson.
Here.
Councilmember Zinner.
Here.
Councilmember Boyer.
Here.
Councilmember Shinigus.
Here.
And Councilmember Martin. Councilmember Martin is absent. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The purpose of this public hearing is for ordinance 1080 concerning a public works agreement for 100 residents' way, and I shall read the header into the record. An ordinance of the mayor and city council of Havittagrace adopted pursuant to the authority of Article 11E of the Maryland Constitution and the local government's article of the annotated code of Maryland and Sections 33 and 34 of the Havittagrace City Charter for the purpose of approving a public works agreement for 100 residents' way. I do not have any sheets for public comments. Do we have anybody in the audience that would like to speak? Wait, sir? Please state your name and your address, sir.
Okay, my name, rank and serial number, sir. Kirk Smith, 840 Otsego, Havittagrace, Maryland, 21078. Do we know anything about this new LLC? I did some research on this the other day, and I noticed that they filed and got accepted as a business in Maryland in January of 2022. What type of a medical facility will this be? Just, I'm curious. I would imagine they're filing plans, but is anybody on the council, because your guys' ears closer to the ground than mine in this case?
I'll let Mr. Gavitt answer that.
Certainly. So this is Dr. Schneider. Dr. Schneider currently has a professional service up at the facility, 200 block of Lewis Lane extended, up near the Burger King. She does treatments for, primarily for spine and pain. She is not a supplier of, she doesn't do the methadone and those type of treatments. These are primarily where they do surgical, small surgical, like nerve blocks and that sort of thing. She has a small surgical facility within the facility up at Lewis Lane.
That sounds excellent.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
You bet.
That was pretty much my only question. Oh, status of the water tower, because this is.
Sir, this is a public hearing for this specifically?
Well, that water tower is what's going to be supplying their water, and that's what this agreement is about, correct?
So the agreement here is not so much for water. They're going to continue to use their well system. This specifically is for the sewage system, for them to tie into the sewer over at, near Monarchos Boulevard. The water supply right now does not go up past Monarchos. They had the county look at their well, and based on what their recovery rates were, it was adequate for the facility that they want to operate from.
But it is in there that they will be tying off to city water. It was in the documentation.
At some later date, when the city's prepared to run the water line up there, as well as the sewer.
So that is why the question existed. If they're going to tie off, I just want to make sure they're adequately supplied. It sounds like a really good facility. There's a lot of injuries to a number of veteran friends of mine who have back injuries due to exploded ordinance, that's, you know, roadside bombings, et cetera. And they live in this area, and I look forward to Dr. Schneider getting up and getting their own facility up and running. Thank you so much for your answers.
Is there anybody else from the audience that would like to speak? Any more from council? Comments from council? Then I shall entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
It's been regularly moved by Councilmember Boyer, seconded by Shinigus. All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries 5-0. The time is now 6:05. All right, moving right along. Give me just a minute. Sure, we can wait. Take a quick 30-minute, 30-second recess. Have me some pizza. Mine's on now. We call the board to adjourn. This is the council of Havittagrace, July 25th, current at 7:00 PM. Vote call. Councilmember Zinner.
Here.
Councilmember Martin. Councilmember Boyer.
Here.
Councilmember Shinigus.
Here.
And Councilmember Robertson.
Here.
The purpose of this court session is to discuss the terms, right, accessory housing units. Discussing, discuss the licensing, regulation, and location of the insurance, accessory housing units for the tenants' homes and their, if any, building, building free station. Director of planning, Mr. Versi.
Good evening, everybody. So, as everyone knows, and I'll get into more detail on this, there's currently a moratorium on short-term rentals in the city that expires in October. Coming into the position in the middle of the moratorium, I've done my best to do some research, kind of see where everything stood with short-term rentals in the city. So really what I'm trying to do today is to hopefully get some information from you on how we want to go forward with short-term rentals to maybe see what some of the issues are with short-term rentals, and maybe just spark some of your imagination. So even if today we don't get all the answers, that within a couple weeks, as a couple of you are writing some legislation and as we're working through these things, I can get some of the answers that I need, so I can put the report together that's required as part of the moratorium. So I'm going to go through this presentation. You can stop me at any point that you like. And again, this is really just to solicit input and questions and everything from you, so I can put together the report to help this body move forward and regulate short-term rentals as needed. So, short-term rental. So in our code, short-term rental is any dwelling or portion thereof that is available for use or is used by accommodations or lodging of guests paying a fee or other compensation for a period then less than 30 consecutive days. So that's written in the moratorium currently. It doesn't include legally permitted hotels and motels, so it's outside of the hotel and motel market. And we kind of think of Airbnb and Booking.com and those sorts of places where you find short-term rentals, but that's not necessarily just the case anymore. While you can find daily rentals or things under 30 days, there's also long-term rentals on these sites. So these sites have become more complicated. They're not just for this one specific thing anymore. So we currently have a moratorium, and just to bring everybody up to speed on that, it was put into place April 4th, and it will end October 4th. And it says, "The purpose is for the director of planning to prepare a report that discusses the appropriateness of land use restrictions, protect the public health, safety, and welfare, and find out what the, examine what the impacts of short-term rentals are on the city." And I'm also to provide all of you with sufficient time to be able to review that report to make decisions. So I want to pledge from me, from my department, that by the end of August, I want to have that report to all of you. So if we decide not to extend the moratorium, and you want it to end October 4th, that you'll have some time for consideration based on the information that my department puts out. There's some legislation currently being worked on, so that can also continue to move forward, so there can be some discussion of in-house of what that looks like and how it should look. And one good thing, I think, is that we have building blocks to go off of. There's currently legislation already in place. So under Chapter 147 of our rental code that was adopted in 2004, and this was before this idea of short-term rentals and Airbnb, this was mostly for long-term rental properties in town. This was put in place, but it's, I mean, it has all the nuts and bolts. It has the powers and duties of the code official, which is also, in this case, the planning director, not the code enforcement officer, says who must register their properties and how they're supposed to do it, that there's an inspection process, how enforcement works, how waivers work, what it's a violation, and what those penalties can be. And I mean, those are the basic nuts and bolts of any law like this, any kind of rental law. So now that there's short-term laws, there may be some things, or short-term rentals, there may be some things in short-term rentals that are different than long-term rentals, but I think the nuts and bolts are the same, generally speaking, the skeleton of what a law like this regulating rentals should look like. So there may not be the need to recreate the wheel as far as filling in the blanks. So there was some problem with this law. Maybe Steve could speak to this, there's more questions, but at least at some point, there was a moratorium for eight months that was adopted in April of 2011. No action was taken on that, so this law came back in place. And my department, as people call, we have a running spreadsheet of rental properties in the town. I don't think they're for short-term rentals, but as far as the inspections, any of that stuff, none of the enforcement activities are taking place. But as people call, we're putting them on the list. We're registering them. So there's lots of questions, there's lots of reasons to regulate, and this is why we're here tonight. So these are some of the reasons, but this is more of what I'm looking for from you. So some of these reasons are, there's a moratorium in place, so why did this body put the moratorium in place? What were you looking to examine? We discussed some of those things of what's supposed to come out of the report from my department, but it'd be interesting to hear in more detail of why the moratorium was put in place in the first place. You want to provide some sort of mechanism to ensure that properties are safe and habitable. You want to make sure there's not disparate impacts on neighborhoods. A lot of different communities have saw party houses pop up, and they're not in locations where they want party houses. Where short-term rentals are now, if there's enough rentals on the market for long-term rentals, then a larger supply could decrease the cost of rent, making rentals more affordable, where some of these Airbnbs coming out of the market take some of that market away and take away some of the affordable housing. So there's the potential to look at the mix of short-term rentals versus long-term rentals versus homeownership in the community, as one thing to look at regulating. And also, if we're going through all this work and making sure that we're protecting the health, safety, and welfare of visitors that are coming to the community, that we also have the opportunity to collect some tax, similar to what we do now with hotel taxes, motel taxes, that sort of thing. So if we are to enforce the existing law or any new law, it does require manpower, and not just manpower, but that's the one part we always think of. But now with Airbnb and Booking.com and Verbo and the thousand other websites, it's impossible to, it would be, I don't know if it's impossible, it would be highly inefficient and difficult to scour websites and try to see who's putting their places up for short-term rentals, but they haven't registered. And there are softwares and things available that help do that now. So this wouldn't be just, you know, bringing somebody in and kind of having them walk the streets or anything like that. With the technology, there's an added piece to this that we need manpower to be out there enforcing, doing annual inspections, day-to-day code enforcement, listening at complaints, monitoring those websites, and then the cost of the tools and software needed to be able to do that efficiently. So in your packet, and if you haven't had a chance to read it, there is something from a software company called Granicus. So Granicus does sell software for these purposes. So this is a bit of a marketing tool, but it's also a really nice white paper that generally discusses good ways to, the best practices for putting ordinances together. But this is really specific towards short-term rentals. So they have a lot of items that they discuss in here that are problems or have been problems in other communities, and discuss why you would want to regulate those things. So if you look past the idea that at the end of the day, this is the president of a company trying to sell you some software, it's a really, really informative article. They show you where this can go wrong in San Francisco, and they have this gigantic five-step process to just register your short-term rental, and how complicated it can be. And then they have a whole section of policy objectives of why, again, these objectives that we should, we can talk about today, or we can figure out a way to get that information from all of you to get to council president or myself in the future, in the near future. But I guess that's, from my standpoint, I guess that's kind of where we're at, the short-term rental ordinance. I don't know exactly what we're trying to regulate or why, or what you may be trying to prevent or promote. So part I wanted to do today was to discuss some of that. If you had any ideas and kind of go over some of those things, and if not, you know, come up with some timeline that each of you could give me some information in the future, in the next couple weeks, so I could put that report together at the end of August, to tell me more of like what you're looking to regulate.
All right. I was unaware, actually, of the moratorium from 2011. It's interesting. I didn't know that. When this came forward last year, when we discussed the moratorium, it was specifically to come up with the law and have that time, that timeframe to discuss exactly what we just brought up, the enforcement issues, the safety issues, the neighborhood issues, if possible, limiting it to different zones, or districts, that is, and, you know, make sure that our community stays, you know, a nice hometown, downtown feel. And we don't want, again, the party houses and stuff like that coming up. We don't want, we don't want some of the issues that come along with some Airbnbs. We also realize that there's a distinct lack of hotels and overnight places to stay here in the community. So that's why the administration passed this on to us to look at, specifically to discuss. Does council have anything they'd like to add or ask?
Yeah. Back when we first talked about the moratorium, I had mentioned that I had attended a webinar that was specifically for Deep Creek Lake. I'm not, I can't remember what county they're in, Washington County, but in the western part of the state, and the steps that they've taken in to manage their short-term rentals. Now, whether some of that is scalable to our size, Deep Creek Lake is pretty large, and they have many different types of housing, from large homes similar to what they have in North Carolina on the Outer Banks that families can rent for however many days, maybe three or four days, maybe a week or so, to smaller units, condo units, and things like that. So I looked at some legislation from a town that I lived in, in Pennsylvania, Kennet Square, which is in Chester County, not far from Longwood Gardens, and they rolled their short-term rental into their long-term rental guidelines and policies. But I took the approach that this was sort of separate because there are situations that are different for short-term rentals than for long-term rentals. But if you want to cut to the chase, there's basically three or four steps. It's apply, you have an application, and you register your unit or units. You have an inspection. If your inspection meets common sense safety regulations, like if you're on a second floor, you have screens so that nobody can open a window, just fall out. You have smoke detectors in working order. You have fire extinguishers. Your roof isn't leaking into the unit, things like that, that are really kind of common sense, and actually, for the short-term rental market, would give you a better grade than if you didn't follow that. You can also take a look at square footage, and if you have a two-bedroom unit with a living room, that could count as maybe housing five people. If you have a one-bedroom unit and a living room, maybe that could house at the most three people. So you're looking at square footage and capacity when you take a look at the short-term rentals, and that should be the same also for a long-term rental. With that said, you can maybe keep down on the party houses that have given the business a bad name. The other thing then, once you've made your application, you've registered your unit or units, you have an inspection to look for those kinds of things, and then you get a permit. And then you place your permit in a conspicuous area, and this is something that Ocean City, Maryland does, for example, whereby a person who comes and rents your short-term unit sees that you have a permit, that you've been inspected by the city, that your rental unit is legal, so to speak, and that the city is aware, and you've met all the qualifications in terms of safety for your occupants, basically. So it's not, in my mind, it's not something that is to hinder your business. So it's not, in my mind, it's not something that is to hinder your business. And we could, we can put language in that, once you apply, that the inspection is done as quickly as possible. I don't know what that would look like. Would it be five days, 10 days, 15 days, within 30 days? But so that we don't hinder your business in any way, so that you can continue advertising and running. But we do want to know how many short-term rentals we have in the city and how many people are using those kinds of services, Airbnb or HomeAway or VRBO and a host of others. So it's, uh, as Tim was saying, it's really hard to manage that one by one, but we, we would hope people would come forward and, and register their units, knowing clear well what the expectation is. Now, if I go back to the Deer Creek example, because they're so large and because a lot of their properties are year-round with skiing and, and then in the summer with boating and camping, um, they use, they use a specific company that, um, that owners or occupants can call if there's a problem with the unit. So that way they're not constantly calling the owner. So they've offloaded that to a company that can go and check and see if there's some problem. Maybe they can't get in, maybe the key isn't working, some small problem up to a big problem. They also have the insurance to cover if something should happen, either damage or injury. And their statistics are extremely low in those areas. I had a B and B at one time in Kennet Square, and I never had breakage. I never had any problems with anyone being hurt or anything like that. So I, I think it's kind of low risk for some of these insurance companies that are doing that. But many of the things that they set up were specifically to help the owners of the properties ensure a good experience for the occupant of the property. So the president of the real estate organization, it's a woman, and she had been in the business for quite some time, but she worked with the city council and they have a very good relationship. And she finds that the system that they set up in Maryland has, has worked well for them. And again, it's, it's not Havertie Grace, there's so many more rentals there than what we would have. But again, it's a framework for what can work and what options that maybe an owner has to either hire outside help in terms of legal, legal issues or issues that with the tenant occupant complaint or such as that, or they handle it themselves. So that's not something that would be mandatory, that would be something that's up to the, the individual owner. So we're looking for health and safety issues. We're looking to know where you are. We want to know how large your unit is and based on square footage or the number of bedrooms, for example, how many occupants that can safely stay in that unit and not overtax the, uh, the unit itself. So there are my comments.
I just want to tag Arne to that. Things that are important to know is, or most important to know is who, within the community, we can, the, we, the city can contact, or not just the community, within a reasonable sp, time period, whether it be mileage or et cetera, that we can contact in case there's something that happens. Whether it be a, a tree falls on it, or a pipe bursts, or, or if we have repeated problems with the tenants and the police, you know, constantly go there, who will be the local agent responsible for it that will be accessible? I think that's of, of use to the city there. I've rented a number of, I wouldn't call them Airbnbs because I think that's more of a, a trademarked name. I've rented a number of short-term rentals. Every place that I go, it's slightly different depending on the municipality, but I am noticing more and more as we do it, it's becoming more and more structured and requirements. And the, within the application that I use, the taxing is taken care of, as part of it, the local taxing authority is taking care of it. So I think those are all very important things. I think for us, creating a, a fair playing field within the space is very important. I, you know, I have empathy for our bed and breakfasts that are regulated pretty highly by the health department. And I believe that if, if we have a, a rental that is regulated by another industry or another entity, whether it be the health department or, I think of the rentals for our senior living, that they're, and, um, they're regulated by another entity that, that we don't necessarily have to run, regulate them as much. However, it's important for us to have the name and listing of it. Now, you said that you're collecting a spreadsheet. Can you tell us a little bit more about the spreadsheet?
Yeah, I mean, this is just for long-term rentals. So this is something that's been going on because of chapter 147 since 2004. So basically anybody who, who calls in, um, we get their information, name, address, that they're using their property as a rental property, and then it's-
Name and address of the person who's, or the name and address, everything, name, address, like what are all the fields in the spreadsheet?
I, I would have to get the spreadsheet for you, I'm, I'm not sure. But-
And how many are listed on the spreadsheet?
I also don't know. But it's been information we had since 2004, so I'm sure there's things that are no longer rentals. We don't, we don't call annually, we don't follow up with, it's just not part of what, what we've done with that spreadsheet.
Okay.
So it's just historical information on people who voluntarily decided to register their homes as a, a rental.
So there's, there's no, has there ever been a case where we've had to refer back to the spreadsheet for anything? So it's not even been used, it's just a, it's-
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure we've used it in, in some way. Like I'm, I'm sure there's been a situation where a, a tenant has called and, and had a problem and we had to look to see-
It's probably not a fair question for you, since you've only been here for a short period of time. But Steve?
Yeah, so going back to 2011, Tim had mentioned, uh, there was an eight-month moratorium at that time. So there was a rewrite of the, what used to be called the tenant landlord ordinance. And, um, uh, there was some, I guess, uh, issues between the, where the tenants wanted a very aggressive ordinance. And then there was a landlord's side of the, the same ordinance, where they wanted to be, have more of a say. So the council at that time, it was around 2006, '07, '08, put together this ordinance. It, um, the landlords were really getting, uh, kind of perturbed that the city was, they were required to submit information to the city and what this, was the city actually doing with it. Some landlords chose to participate, some didn't. The ones that did got upset because they were taking the time to do what they were supposed to based on the ordinance, but the city wasn't holding everyone accountable. So it was a sort of a, uh, it was a, a law that just wasn't being followed and fairly applied. So in 2011, there was a decision made by the council then to, um, uh, have a moratorium and a rewrite. And it never was rewritten, it was never updated. I knew Councilman Martin took it on, I think his first year on council to, uh, try to get the tenants and landlords together. And I think he had one or two meetings and there was not ever any traction that moved forward. It went, uh, about the time that Mr. Ishak was here and then left to go to the, um, uh, to the bench. And I know I was council president for a year or two with Councilman Martin, Martin working on it. Just never really seemed to be a, from the legislative side, an issue, and from the administration side, there was just a sort of like, uh, you know, let it be, we don't, there wasn't any issue. So what we're seeing now is a, a number of short-term rentals. The rental industry in the city of Havertie Grace is probably the largest industry in the city. The number of, I don't have the exact number of rental units, but it's a, it's a significantly high number.
Do we know them all? I mean, do we have any way of knowing conclusively how many rentals?
Not conclusively, but, uh, based just on estimates, looking at, if you go through the Sstat and you look at, there's a lot of homes that are not primary residences. So the, if you take that and the presumption is that they're, they're rentals, they could be a second home. So there's, again, it's a presumption. The planning department, through the entire course of, uh, of time since 2004, there was a rental registration process, which is, is very important because there's lead laws and other laws that must be followed. Typically, to your question, Councilmember Boyer, with, have we ever gone back to this list? Have we ever extracted information? Has it ever been useful? Absolutely. Yes, 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 and yes, um, from a, a variety of, of reasons. The nuisance ordinance actually, actually needs to be enforced through a, a number of complaints from citizens. We can come, we can track that there. In the process of, I'm sort of getting all over the map, but in the process of what was wrong with the system when the landlords were complaining was how are you using this information to benefit the rental industry? And one of them was that if we get tenant complaints, that's very important, we need to track those. And if we get neighborhood complaints, very important to track those. But there was no, um, uh, system that would talk from, uh, that would communicate from City Hall over to the police department. So it'd actually have to be these spreadsheets run and then passed over. If there were calls for service, for example, pick an address, then the idea was that you could, PD could quickly look up the address and see if there was a history of, of either tenant issues or landlord issues, that sort of thing. Admins, our current software system within the city, uh, I know Councilman Martin worked with them as, with, uh, Mr. Grimm. And the, um, a module to try to link those together was attempted. It just wasn't, they, they weren't compatible. So it sort of got back to this, going back to square one was, do we, the system that Marissa has been virtually taken care of since the beginning of, of this, uh, the rental ordinance, since this existed, is in a simple Excel spreadsheet. And she captures the name of the, uh, the owner, uh, the name of the tenant. So for example, uh, when I, I have rental units, so when I, my tenant changes, I send a form into the city saying who my tenant is, um, what their contact information is, and, um, the city, I don't, I don't think there's an inspection arm within the, uh, the system right now, but potentially there could be. As Mr. Boursier was saying, that if you take an ordinance and use some of the model ordinances that are out there, there would be an inspection process. Do we need to, does that need to be part of this? I don't know. That's really up to council, where, how far you want to take it. Things like, um, that you had mentioned and, and Councilmember Zinner, about working smoke detectors and screens in windows and means of egress. And right now they are completely unregulated and it's really based on the, uh, how reliable the, in caring that the landlord is. Because in many cases, even when the fire service goes to calls for service, um, a lot of times they don't know, the, the only way they can typically tell if it's a rental, and this doesn't account for a short-term rental, but if it's a rental, multiple meters. Because they can see, you know, that there's, maybe the second floor's been converted and typically, uh, not always, but the, the multiple meters or multiple mailboxes are the first indicator. So when they're sizing up the fire scene, they're looking for the, the electric meters and they're looking for the number of mailboxes. But there's a number of homes that we all know that have been converted, uh, and actually de-converted back into single families that were five, four and five unit houses that were in a single family or a single address. And they became an A unit or a dash one unit or so on and so forth. So I, I think there's, this is a, a good time for council just to kind of take a, a step back and look at all the issues, all the above. You know, at some point, be ready to take, uh, reach out to, uh, I think it'd be very valuable information, having a, a public input session from landlords, a, a tenant section where the tenants have, uh, comments. And those that are now involved with the, the short-term rental. Because that's a completely different, um, uh, challenge that we have because the, the city has, um, over the last four or five years, knowing that the hospital was going to kind of bug out of town, that we wanted to start converting back some of the multifamily and, and, um, uh, office, uh, units that were once single families to de-convert them back into the original use, uh, to kind of get back into preserving neighborhoods. With, um, short-term rentals, where you're getting one, two, three a week, three day or up to a week or month rentals, the dynamic really changes. Typically with, uh, I have a rental unit, it's generally a year-to-year lease, hopefully longer. Uh, so it's not that much work. But, uh, but rentals, no matter where at in the city, do impact neighborhoods. And I think that's something that this ordinance needs to be sensitive to. If you're in a, you know, regardless of residential one, two, or, um, residential business, it just, you need to be sensitive to the fact that, um, especially in R1 and R2, they're typically designed for, um, uh, a, a single-family users. So if you're having multiple, multiple families coming into a single-family residence that's cut up, that's one set of problems, or challenges, I should say. And, um, but if it's a single-family home that's going to be used as a rental sort of Deep Creek Lake, or when you get down into, uh, some of the shore houses, probably a little bit better situation. However, you still will have neighbors not, potentially having a different neighbor, 52 different neighbors in the course of a year, if you get a, a weekly rental each week of the month. So those are all, I think, considerations that we need to look at. I have none, no answer whatsoever. I think it's going to be interesting to hear from tenants and landlords, 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 and also on this, this new, uh, short-term rental phenomena that we're, that we're starting to see in the city. Because this is really, uh, when you, when you look at what we're seeing with the short-term rentals, it's really, um, it, it's a very good problem to have because we're very successful. People want to be here, they want to visit here. To council's comments, there is no, there's a hotel shortage proper within the city. We have attempted many times to try to attract boutique hotels, you know, small, small hotel chains to come into the city, um, outside of what we have on Route 40 now, something a little more attractive and, and what we feel like people would want. And people just don't seem to be able to make the numbers work. The investor, investing groups and the small chains, we were that close, uh, with a hundred-unit, uh, facility down on the waterfront, five, six years ago, and they just couldn't make the numbers work. So I think, uh, when you look at the downtown, there's some great opportunities down there with, you know, second, third floor areas to be, uh, I think, uh, Joel, Ms. Jolene has a, has a, a good, um, good plan down there for, for that sort of thing. I think that'll work. Uh, I think there's neighborhoods that are absolutely will work, uh, but we just got to kind of get our arms around it and figure what, what we want. But outside of the short term, uh, we do have a, a bigger challenge, I think, is just getting the rental ordinance back up on the table and, and addressed.
So, um, of course we want the short-term rentals to be successful, and we definitely want people coming to Havertie Grace. The main concern, I believe, is us being aware as citizens that we do live next door to an Airbnb or where they might be located, so that we can be aware of the traffic. And, um, you know, that, okay, there's people coming and going from this place, you know, we can welcome them, we can, you know, just keep an eye on it and make sure that we're in a safe situation. And possibly the long-term, or the short-term owners could give a list of expectations, you know, city rules- of expectations, you know, city rules, et cetera, so that we're all in common communication, and that, you know, it can be successful.
I think, you know, the genesis of this, at least from my perspective, when talking to Shane prior to April, was that his concern is, was along the lines of, yeah, citizens knowing who their neighbors are and what's going on in their building, which, I mean, from my perspective, you've probably got a good idea of what, what the buildings in your neighborhood are being used for. But I think the other concern was what some of the major cities are seeing with short-term rentals, and that's the availability of the long-term rental housing for folks. And if you look at like New York City or LA, these are big problems, because before, when it was just the wild, wild west, and there was no regulation, I mean, companies would come in, buy up an entire apartment complex, and then basically set up a hotel without any regulation or oversight. And, you know, that just exacerbates an already prolonged homeless issue in those major cities. I don't know that that's necessarily the concern here. You know, I think that our market has dictated a good number of short-term rentals, and obviously they're being successful, or else people wouldn't be setting them up. I don't feel like a specific license for the short-term rentals is the approach that we should take. I feel more aligned with what Carolyn was saying for the overall rental issue in Havertie Grace, that there's no, no inspection requirement or anything. Excuse me. And I feel like if maybe we tackle that piece of it, and just go under the guise of any rental, would be subject to, you know, to register, and through that registration process, the city annually reviews the business documents, for example. So if the property is owned by an LLC, you know, the city will just check and make sure that that LLC is in good standing with the state of Maryland, because we're letting a business operate in this town that may or may not be in good standing. And also the inspection requirement. Up until last year, I had property in West Grove, Pennsylvania, which requires an annual inspection, and as a, as a property owner, it's kind of a nuisance, because every time they come in there, there's something, that, you know, there's, this light switch here is loose, or this railing here needs to be painted, or whatever the case may be. It's the same, same property, everything looks the same, as that same inspector saw it last year. But there's always something. And, you know, that can be a bit of a nuisance and a bit cumbersome as, as the property owner, but I think, to Carolyn's point, in ensuring that the facility is maintained well, that's just going to bode well for the tenant and for all of us, other property owners here in town. You know, I mean, how many properties are rather disheveled, and we really don't have that enforcement arm that I think we probably need. Up until last year, I had rental properties here in Havertie Grace. Last year was a very good year to sell property, by the way. Excuse me. But, you know, Steve, I'm just going to say, I came to City Hall maybe two years, and, you know, like updated my little document of who was renting and all that, and then I was just like, whatever. I mean, the lead inspection people would still come, because that's a state thing. But, you know, the city probably didn't have the most updated records, but there was no enforcement. I mean, there was no reason for me to take time out of my day to do that, and I didn't really see the necessity. But if there is the enforcement aspect, you know, and someone's able to come in and, you know, just review the land, the landowner, the, the current renters, you know, especially if it's a long-term situation, that gets to all the safety aspects. And then, simple things like, is this place rat-infested? You know, instead of having to turn that over to the county, if we as the city could enforce that, we would do much better for our, you know, our constituents. So, you know, I like to see maybe, and Carolyn, I know that you're, you're taking up the rental ordinance now, correct?
Yeah, in the long-term.
Yeah. So I mean, I think, you know, really, this, this short-term aspect could be rolled into that, until a time when it, when it's really necessary warranted to, to scale it back a little bit, you know.
Right, and that was sort of my conundrum, because we were looking at 147, which already exists, and then we had determined that we would do the, have a six-month moratorium. So I actually switched from doing the long-term rental to doing the short-term rental, but the same thing would apply. There would be an application to register, and I did forget, there would be a fee, a yearly fee for that. We have to look at the numbers and determine how many rentals there would be, because we would have to pay for another code enforcement officer, at least one, maybe even two.
This would be a full-time job, basically.
Right, right, in order to complete that inspection process with the number of rentals that we have. We also have an issue in terms of the long-term rentals where, and I don't want to get too far afield on this, but there's things that you can consider, like with a long-term rental, do you have a management company that's managing your apartment? Like, if you take a look at 515 Warren Street, it's senior housing and it's managed by a company that does that. And they, the outside, I have never been in one of the apartments, but the outside is very nice-looking. It's clean, it's, looks very well-kept, so maybe something like that. You do a percentage of the units, because it's, it's so well-kept. But we do have an issue with absentee landlords trying to get in touch with them, and if they're getting a registered letter, they don't go to the post office and pick it up. So that's why we talk about a resident agent or a management company taking over that responsibility. So when I lived in Kennet Square, I had, my primary residence was also a small B and B, and my, the house next to me, which was my, our home also, was two homes on one lot, was three apartments, and we had a yearly inspection. And quite honestly, I was grateful for the yearly inspection, because I couldn't postpone deferred maintenance, but it also gave me an opportunity to send a letter to the tenant and say, the city's coming, or the borough, in that instance, is coming to do the inspection on such and such a date, and I will be coming with them, so that there's two people in the apartment, and I don't want to hear about somebody, something's missing, or whatever. So, but it also gave me an opportunity to see how that tenant was taking care of my apartment, and if it wasn't going so well, then I could give them a notice to quit once their lease was up, or maybe even before their lease was up, if I wanted to take more legal action. So I always appreciated going into my apartments and seeing what was happening and what was going on. And we had very strict limits of how many people could live there. And then on my B and B, when I opened that, there were no regulations about B and Bs. So I went to the council meeting, and I asked if I could continue to run it, and they said yes. It was, it was a small operation. I was on the main street in Kennet Square, I had parking meters in front of my house, I had a dentist next to me, so it was pretty much mixed-use property. And so my husband and I did that, it was a lot of work. So I know what a, what a lot of work is for a short-term rental, and being home and being responsible, but also the idea of having a, depending on how many units you have, having an agent that you can contact, or the guests can contact. So a lot of what I put together for the short-term rental applies to the long-term rental. But I moved this up because of the moratorium, and then we'll go back to 147, and if we can blend these together. So one of the things I think Tim wanted to talk about today is if we could look to postponing the voting on the ordinance for the short-term rental, until we get the long-term rental, and then roll it all together. But I don't know if that's something that's possible, or if it's something that we want to do.
I have a question. For short-term rentals, when you, when you look at other municipalities, not necessarily locally, state, federal, do they use the zoning code to identify where short-term rentals can and cannot?
Yeah.
Generally, what is it?
I mean, it's all over the place, because it really just depends, zoning code is used, but it's all over the place. It depends what you're trying to, to prevent or promote. So if you don't want, I mean, party houses was one of the things, so they don't want those in residential neighborhoods, but maybe it's more appropriate in where college kids are staying, that sort of stuff. So it just depends, but zoning code is a tool, and we could also leave it more, even more locally up to homeowners associations within neighborhoods to make those decisions where there's homeowner association. So there's lots of ways to do it.
Thank you.
Yeah. Councilmember Boyer, for example, Bully Rock, you can't rent for anything less than a year. So that's in their bylaws, so we're not going to have any short-term rentals there. And in Perryville, you can't rent for any less than 30 days. So there are limitations in terms of trying to control the flow into certain types of rentals.
How about where you lived, your homeowners association, where they sit?
I know that people do rent out shorter than a year, I don't know that it's actually delineated within the bylaws. So as tonight is a, a work session, there is no public comment tonight. I do agree that we should have meetings to open it up for public comment specifically, for questions and input, to help us craft this in a manner that's fair and, you know, equitable to the community, and we can achieve all the goals that we're hoping for. Did you want to move on to the second portion of the accessory dwellings?
Sure. So this is, the next part of this, it's all, it's all built in together. So in my, my two months that I've been here, we've had three accessory dwelling units of different sizes, from, from 1,400 square feet, which is another house in itself, to something of 400 or 500 square feet. And with these, there's been a lot of questions that have come up of how, can they be used? Can they be used for short-term rentals? What is in addition to your home versus what's a separate dwelling unit? So a lot of these things have, a lot of these things come up, and with these, come up a lot of fees, because the amount of fixtures that are added could increase water and sewer fees, so we've had some, some issues with that, and questions from multiple residents that either built these or is considering building them, where this has sort of become a problem. So what's in addition to your home? What is an accessory dwelling unit? And how can it be used? Just for family members, for short-term rentals, for long-term rentals, and kind of how that should look? So that'll be this next part here. So an accessory dwelling unit, according to the American Planning Association, is a smaller independent residential dwelling unit on the same lot as a single-family home. It can be internal, attached, and detached. So there's a small picture here, but what you, what you see is detached on the top left, attached on the, on the top right. You have a garage apartment in the middle-left, you have a basement apartment on the middle-right. And then, I'm not sure what the other, the other two are exactly, but it's, you know, basically renting other places in your home, is it, do you have a separate garage? Are you building a separate unit? There's a lot of different ways that, that these can look. So it could be something, we talk about mother-in-law apartments, where you convert your garage, or a part of your house, or it could be a complete addition to your, to your home, and, and how you use that. So we have two ways that we currently address accessory dwelling units in our code. So we have what we call cottage dwellings. They're allowed as a conditional use by the Board of Appeals in all the residential districts. We say that the owner must occupy one of the dwellings. One off-street parking space is required, depending on, on the district that you're in, and when your, when your home was built, and other conditions as necessary by the Board of Appeals. So Board of Appeal can put, Board of Appeals can put on additional conditions based on the specific property in question. We also have an accessory structure ordinance, which is not, is not allowed in all of the residential districts. It says that it has to be detached, and that it must be at least 1,000 square feet. So in that way, though, the cottage dwelling and our accessory structures, they're kind of in conflict with each other. An accessory, an accessory structure is already a cottage dwelling, but it's just not allowed in all the other places. And really, all it does is allow you to circumvent Board of Appeals and have any conditions looked at on, on your accessory dwelling. So we've been requiring a statement from the owners, saying that, that they'll be staying in the unit, or that they'll have their immediately, immediate family members in the other unit. So it's something that we're requiring. We also were, were looking to have, we've written on some of the permits and at Board of Appeals, we've asked for the condition that if the property sells, that that, that license for an accessory dwelling doesn't go to the next seller, that they have to come back in. So those are some tools that we've tried to put in place to, to kind of regulate this, but what we really have on our hands are people building, there's, there's a, there's a huge gray area in between what's in addition to your home, what's an accessory dwelling unit, and how it's going to be used. Are you putting family in there? If it's your, your, your elderly parents, that's great, but eventually, if they pass on, then how do you use that unit? Or if you then sell to go to a smaller place and somebody else buys, they now have two, two houses on one lot, how will they use it in the future? I mean, will it be two separate homes? Will it be somebody living in one and having extra income on the other? It's just very, very difficult, once these, once these are built, what's going to happen to them later, under our law. So as I mentioned, some of the problems with our code, there's, there's some contradictory language between accessory dwellings and cottage dwellings. There's no size limitations, nothing about lot coverage requirements, bedrooms, bathrooms, or kitchen facilities. So in a lot of other jurisdictions, the way they handle this problem is, is they don't allow kitchen facilities in the accessory dwelling units. So everybody has to cook and eat in the main house, or if you're staying there as a short-term rental, you, you go to, you go to restaurants downtown, or you do takeout, or there's maybe a microwave in there. It just depends. With these other things, so size limitations, I'll talk about in a little bit, from the law in Chevy Chase, Maryland, that was passed. There's no lot coverage requirements, so in some of the areas downtown, they're building above the 50% lot requirements we would have when somebody's initially building a house, because we're saying it's a lot of record, and I'll get to that in a second. But again, we need to be able to also distinguish between what is in addition to your home and, and what will become an accessory dwelling unit. How do we define those things and how they'll be used? So in our code, we have this lot of record exemption. So it says, "Single-family detached dwellings which have been or may be constructed on lots created within the, within deeds of subdivision, or plats recorded in the land records of Harford County prior to March 15, 1982," which is when the city enacted their zoning code, "shall be exempt from the single-family residential lot specifications in Table 1." So Table 1, we look at minimum lot area, maximum lot covered, setbacks, heights, and heights of buildings. So right now, any lot of record that was, that was put in place prior to the city having zoning code, doesn't need to follow the rules of zoning code, which means you could, you could fill a lot entirely with a building, or multiple buildings, if you were built before 1982. And this has been applied, I would say liberally in my, my, my understanding and the experience of two years here, sometimes it's for something simple, like, you know, in the downtown area, we won't require another parking spot for, for in addition to a home, because it's in the downtown area, and nobody has driveways or off-street parking, and we don't want garages and those sorts of things. But this is really left open to, to interpretation, and could really lead to, and, and maybe this is a way to solve a different problem with affordable housing, but you, you know, you could have two or three actual dwellings on every lot. And, and some, some places are regulating that by saying, hey, no kitchens, or only one bedroom, or, you know, only so many bathrooms with, you know, one bedroom, or it has to be attached, if it's a, has to be attached and have entranceways throughout the house, there has to be circulation, versus shut off with maybe like a door connecting. So there's ways to look at that. And this is why it matters, that there's no development standards, nothing that we're looking at previous space, we could be building out of the character of the community, you have multiple potential large, large houses on a single lot, could create parking problems in neighborhoods, and just the general public safety, health, and welfare, if you get a lot of people in neighborhoods and communities that weren't designed for that many more, more people. So I'll get into these, the recommendations here in a second, but I just want to reiterate why this matters from, from our department, our discussion tonight, is, is we've, we've had people inquire about building accessory dwelling units in had people inquire about building accessory dwelling units and using them for short-term rentals. And, and again, what happens, we, we have other situations where people aren't, that own the home currently, aren't interested in using them for short-term or long-term rentals. But once they're built, that's a possibility down the road. And just as markets fluctuate, the city's already seen in its past, dwellings convert to offices, and go from single-family homes to multifamily apartments. So, just as things fluctuate, and buyers and sellers, and come and go, and, and who knows what the next technology is? Maybe it's not Airbnb, and, and obviously, we can't predict everything, but there's some issues here with, with what's kind of, what's kind of being allowed, and maybe what it could be used as. So, some general recommendations, at least for the early stages, as we're going through this, as Councilwoman Zinner had mentioned. We looked at extending, we looked at requesting extending the moratorium on the short-term and long-term rental ordinance, and then also adding an accessory dwelling unit, so we can sort of figure out this whole thing and get legislation all put in at the same time. It was, give us time to gather input. We can do in-person meetings, and I think it's also a great tool to use all the, the social media sites that the city has now, and, and put out surveys and things for people who can't make it, or prefer to discuss these things more anonymously. And eventually, I think it makes sense from the, for accessory dwelling units and cottage dwellings, that we repeal all the language that exists in our code, go to some unified accessory dwelling unit code, where there's not two or three different names for the same thing, and discuss what those look like, what should be in there, and, and, and think about sort of the future of, of, of what those units could, could bring or not bring, and how to regulate those. So as part of that, the next two things in your packet for tonight, one is from AARP, so it's the ABCs of ADUs. And obviously, they're worried about the retirement community. And again, we've talked about mother-in-law apartments are one of the, the things that you, you hear when you hear about accessory dwelling units. So this is, you know, promoting why accessory dwelling units are, are important, and how to best regulate them, what they look like, when people have certain problems, and how to solve them. They have case studies in all different kinds of places. So it's a, it's a promotional tool for accessory dwelling units, but it, it looks through a lot of problems, and it looks at a way to, to make accessory dwelling units work, but also be attractive. And then the second, smaller version, is from Chevy Chase, Maryland, and it's the law they passed on accessory dwelling units. And it tells you, you know, how many you can have per lot, if there's a licensing fee, no licensing fee, the, the number of square feet it can be, what the setback should be, what the lot coverage should be. So, it, it opens up, it actually opens up their law there, where you can go a little bit larger than what their lot coverage requirements would be for a house, so you can get accessory dwelling units in, but it makes them accessory to the existing house. It doesn't, it doesn't make them another house on the same, on the same lot. So, again, some food for thought, and, and another thing that we're, we're looking at is we're kind of working through this, this rental thing, that, you know, we're, we're building more, potentially more units for different types of rentals in the city, and our code doesn't address those well currently.
Counsel, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Bursier?
I, I can, after, after tonight, I can take and put them online. They're both links to, to websites, so yeah, they're both available online. Mm-hmm. Sure. Yep. You're welcome.
Counsel, anything else?
I just, my mind is spinning right now. The complexity of it. I don't think anybody expected us to open Pandora's box in doing this, but in listening to it, I, I think it's something that absolutely needs to be addressed, and addressed in a measured and timely way. I, I think it's doable, as long as we don't have, I'm going to use the military term, mission creep, and, you know, try to, you know, fix everything. I don't think we can fix everything, but I think we can at least get a, a handle on as much, you know, a reasonable amount. I love the idea of having listening sessions and having a wide variety of ways for people to communicate to us, and for us to receive feedback. Obviously, a public work session is not the format, but one of the things I really want to impress upon us as a counsel is, we should not be expecting the public to, on this issue to necessarily show up because we showed up. We, as a counsel, need to go out and, and solicit, and ask for people's information, and get them to engage, because, you know, everybody's busy, everybody has an enormous amount of law, stuff happening with their lives, and this is probably not something they're going to deal with unless they have a need. But it's something that we need to get the feedback from the entire community on their opinion. So I think for us as a counsel, it's really important for us to figure out ways to creatively get to the parts of our community that don't come here regularly, and are not engaged regularly, and somehow get their feedback and, and go the extra step, because this is something of, what sounds like a pretty large magnitude for us to deal with, and it is something that will be the bedrock upon which our community will, you know, we're going to be a vanguard again, because nobody else in the area has one, and they're probably all looking to us to figure this out, too. I know Bel Air does not have a rental ordinance, Aberdeen does not, and it's something that they were all speaking about. So...
Perryville has one.
Right, Perryville has one. So, thank you.
I think it would be wise for us to, you know, do it in a timely manner, but take time to go through each type of dwelling situation, you know, with the affordable housing built on the 40, and with the, the short-term rentals, as well as the long-term rentals, making sure that we take the time, maybe even if we need to extend the moratorium, do what we need to do, but have it, you know, set for, you know, a certain amount of time, where we have interaction with the public, we have interaction with our counsel. And I think what would be great is to have an invitation to owners, and have a, a session where they can speak, and interact, and submit questions in advance, because sometimes, you know, a person might have a great question, but they're a little shy to speak in front of public. So I think that, going forward, we should definitely make some time to interact with our owners. Also, for people that have visited our community, invite them back to speak on behalf of some of the short-term rentals, and what they would like to see to bring them back. Thank you.
Counsel, anything further? Dr. Bursier?
If we do go along with the recommendation to extend the moratorium and add accessory dwelling units, just for purposes of my report, I, I guess, I mean, I can still have something together for the end of August, but it would just be incomplete without public input. So I would also need to probably extend the date on that till the middle of October, I would say, which would give us between now and then to solicit input from the public.
Okay. Can discuss that? I shall entertain a motion to close.
So moved.
Motion by Councilwoman Shinagus.
Seconded by Councilwoman Boyer.
There we go. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, five-nothing. Time is 7:12. Thank you very much.